Good afternoon and welcome to the October 2020 21 meeting of the PG CPS Board of Education Climate Change Action Plan Focus Workgroup Meeting. I serve as I am Pamela Boozer Struther, the District Three Board of Education member, and I serve as co-chair of this workgroup with parent volunteer Joseph Jakuta, representing the Climate Action Parents of Prince George's County. We welcome all workgroup members, special guests, and the viewers of this meeting, and thank you for your dedication to this climate action work. You can see past recordings of meetings and archive of our work at pgcps.org backslash climate. Before I call the meeting to order, I would also like to thank the team that works with me and Joseph Weekly on preparing for each meeting. Kate Calzone, David Smith, and Valerie Irvin, who represents PG CPS CEO Dr. Goldson on the workgroup. I'm grateful to all of you for your commitment and all the all the hard work that you put in in between each of these meetings. Today, we will be discussing the topic of buildings, maintenance, and operations with a particular focus on lead certified and net zero energy technologies and methods. I would like to call this meeting to order and ask for a motion and second for approval of the October 6, 2021 meeting minutes.
I will first.
Thank you, Joseph. Could I have a second?
This is Donald.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, thank you. The meeting minutes are approved. Next, I would like to ask for a motion and a second for approval of today's agenda.
I move that the agenda for today's meeting be approved.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you so much. The meeting for today is approved. See, I think we are ready for announcements, so I will now have Joseph Jakuta and Kate Calzone take us through a couple of announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer Strather. The first announcement is that our next meeting is November 3 at 3:30 PM. We will be just, we are still finalizing exactly what we are going to be talking about because the the topic of buildings has proved to be a multi-meeting discussion. So we will be talking about in some fashion electricity procurement, solar installations on buildings and building retrofits. We're still determining what will be fit into the next meeting and what may possibly be extended into a subsequent meeting. And as far as the research requests, at this point, we have the data that was provided when in each individual building, as well as transportation data available for workgroup members to conduct the research as necessary. If there that that at this point is what we have, if there is additional data that you're seeking that we have not yet received yet, get in touch with me and we will try and figure out what a whether or not it's we will be getting it at some point in the later at a later time or be some sort of workaround. So we can, you can do what sort of research you needed to do for the project. I guess any questions on either of those? And then finally, I will say one, there is an item that I described as plan document support. It was the best I could come up with at the time, but the idea is that if any workgroup members wants to get started on drafting up any section of a of the action plan to get a head start, feel free to, we should email a bit to discuss a format, but we should really start thinking about drafting things since we'll probably need a draft for the workgroup to review in January. So we need to get working on that aspect of it, especially topics that we've already covered. I think we probably can get started. And then also another good reason to get started now is that when we do have, we probably will have an extra meeting in December 15 that is going to be moderately open and we can sort of review loose ends from your research. Any questions? Okay, well, thank you. And I will turn it over to Kate Calzone, who I guess will be talking about the survey and subgroups.
Yeah, great transition there. There we did update the subgroups with the additional feedback that everyone provided either through the form or in the chat from last meeting. So we will be getting those sub subgroups now that they're pretty well rounded. We'll get them started in the next couple of weeks. So folks can dig into the specifics and and perhaps there we can discuss initial authoring of of sections and things like that, as Joseph was just talking about. So, David, I don't think you need to put this slide up again, but if you don't feel like you said where you want to participate in the subgroups, let us know, and we'll make sure that you're there and and get started here quickly. And then, so the Climate Change Action Plan Outreach Survey has been out for a few weeks. We have 76 responses so far. We want to make sure that we get a lot more than that, but the feedback we've gotten so far has been mostly from parents, which is great and a lot of great ideas. So we encourage you all to leverage upcoming events, your networks, your listservs, your email groups. And we put the link in the chat so so we can get that survey out and more in the response rate. And then on top of that, we'll be continuing to promote it in the Engage newsletter. And I know Pamela has has communicated the survey out to various groups. I've done it with a few PTOs and and things, so we'll continue to work work those avenues as well. Does anyone have any ideas or suggestions on how to get the survey out and disseminate it for additional responses in the next few weeks? It's supposed to close at the end of October. Okay, Pamela, do you have any additional input on that?
Oh, well, I was gonna ask if, I guess, really directed at Donald and Michelle and and Jamie possibly because of your your programs, but in the in our student members around, is it possible for this to be a suggested classroom activity or or green team and other organized entity activities so that we can really boost the student input?
So Donald, if we do it like we did last year when we did the pledges, for us, how we did it, I know we would probably get full participation. That's how we did it. We got all those numbers for Largo. So I can run it through Paul here. But remember, I did like a PSA for show kids how to, you know, it's simple things like you think they would know how to just click a form. Actually showed how I did it, filled out the survey. So, yeah, I think that's probably the easiest way. We've been doing a lot where we would do a link like that for any type of survey, Pam, and as teachers just to post in their Google classrooms. That's how we've been doing our rights and responsibilities, getting that actually signed. So that would be one way we could do it through our green clubs.
That's great. Thank you. And I see.
Green, the green clubs, and then we can ask schools that are currently undergoing the green school certification process as well. There's a few different areas that that this could fit into one of the green school objectives. So the green clubs do the, like Michelle mentioned, schools that are doing the green school certification process. And then the the some of our professional development listservs could serve as other avenues for teachers.
Another way you can do.
Great, thank you.
It's like, because all of us, most of our administrators, we have, and some of our teachers too have a school messenger. I know I use the text app more than anything because when you do promo calls, they come up spam risk. A lot of the surveys we do, we send out the text messages to our parents, and that's how you can get everybody to as well.
Great, thank you. Well, if you need any any assistance, please let us know if you need us to draft any of those messages. Happy to do it. And I see Brianna Brianna can share noted that she'll share it with the Environmental Defense Club at her school, Eleanor Roosevelt High School. So thank you, Brianna. And, yeah, so Jabari and Nathan, if if you could also do that in your networks, that would be fantastic. And we could chat more about that when we have our subgroup meeting, our student meeting soon. All right, thanks. Thanks, Kate. Any any more on the survey?
No, there are some specific ideas related to building construction. So if if there's opportunity later in the in the conversation, I can share some of those.
Great, thank you. All right, so Joseph and Kate, unless there's anything else, we can move to our our main discussion today, right?
I think you can move on.
Okay, great, thank you. So, you know, as Joseph mentioned, this would be the first of two meetings on building operation, construction, maintenance, as we move forward in our agenda. And today is no different than many of our meetings where our all of our workgroup members, all of all of you bring your expertise and have helped to plan agendas, moderate lead meetings, and today's no different that we I'm so pleased that Don Holton, Senior Mechanical Engineer for PG CPS, and Donald Goldberg, Executive Director of the Climate Law and Policy Project, are leading our facilitation today. And I would like to welcome our special guest Riley Loveland from the New Buildings Institute. And from PG CPS, Sean Matlock, our Director of Capital Improvement, and Antoine Taylor, Supervisor of Operations. And I know Sam is has Sam Stefanelli, I haven't seen if Sam has joined us yet today, but Sam Stefanelli, Director of Building Services, is also invited to to join us, should he have time today. So with that, I will hand this over to Don Holton and Donald Goldberg to take us through the discussion. Oh, Jamie, I see your hand up.
Pardon the interruption, but I just wanted to let you know, we've had several water main breaks today that have taken the attention of Sam and the team. So Sam is more than likely on site at those locations, trying to get some resolution.
Thank you so much, Jamie. I did. I did see a passing email on that. I hope that can be resolved soon. I know that's a big disruption for everyone, so thank you for letting us know that. All right, so Don and Donald, I'm handing this over to you. And just a reminder that we will conclude at 4:55 today because our Zoom, our special Zoom for Board of Education will be in use by another committee at 5 o'clock. So take it away. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Pamela. I will start because Don and I spoke this morning, and Don is going to make a presentation. I am not. I am going to defer to all the other people on our panel to do the speaking because every one of them knows more than I do. So I was going to be the moderator and make the introductions, but Pam, you already stole my thunder. So can you hear me, by the way? Yeah, you can. I can see you can. So I'm just going to start by saying one thing that I I think we all ought to have in the back of our minds throughout this process. You know, we've all been following what's going on at the federal level with these two bills and, you know, what an awful mess it's been. And, you know, now we know that a big piece of President Biden's plan for reducing carbon emissions is likely going to be carved out. I'm not going to go into the any of the details of that, but I have been following it a bit, not not intensely. When when this became clear, a a consulting firm, I am blanking here on their name, but they have done a lot of the the modeling of various climate actions to see, you know, how closely it will get us to the goal of reducing our emissions 50% by 2030. Oh, Rhodium Group, sorry, that's the name. So Rhodium Group did some very quick calculations to see what we what could be done to fill the gap that's going to be left if that the it's called the Clean Electricity Payment. It's the C E P P, and it's actually, I think it originally was the the Clean Electricity Payment Program, but it's that's not exactly the the current name, but in any event, that's the big piece that looks like is going to be carved out. Rhodium Group said, we can make up those emissions, but only if states pick up the slack. And we know not all states are going to do that. We know that it's going to really devolve to the leadership states, and Maryland is one of those states. Specifically, the Rhodium Group said states, on average, will have to improve energy efficiency by two and a half percent per year. Now, we know, again, that translates to states like Maryland doing more because, in all likelihood, some states will do less or possibly nothing at all. Currently, Maryland's program, Energy Efficiency Program, called Empower, which we're probably all familiar with, requires a 2% annual reduction in energy consumption. Last this year, there was legislation to try to up that to 2.75%. The legislation didn't pass largely because of difficulties with buildings provisions and with the school provisions. So that's another story that we, you know, may want to get into at some point. But all I want to say here is that schools have the opportunity to take the lead in this field, energy efficiency and net zero energy. Schools have simply emerged as being the really the leading sector. It's not because not that we have the largest portion of Maryland's emissions. We certainly don't. We're only between 1 and 2%, although school, school, sorry, school building, school facilities are often the largest emitter in within their districts. So we are significant, but I think even more importantly, for a number of reasons, tremendous progress has been made both on the efficiency side for schools and on the the net zero side. I mean, really, they're not two sides. They blend together. So this is pep talk. I I want us to think think big because particularly, you know, Montgomery County and PG County, Howard County, we've got to lead in the state. I mean, you know, the state has to lead the country, and we have to lead the state. So with that, I am going to turn it over to our first speaker. That's Riley Loveland. Riley Loveland is, she is the Senior Project Manager at New Buildings Institute. New Buildings Institute has been absolutely one of the best organizations in terms of of pointing the way with net zero buildings and net zero schools. Riley knows so much about what's going on all over the country. So I think she'll, you know, really be able to help us think about what other schools are doing and where we could be headed. So with that, Riley, it's up to you.
All right, didn't realize I was going for first. I'll go for it. Hi, everybody. It's nice to meet you. As Donald said, my name is Riley Loveland. I'm actually here in Portland, Oregon, on the other side of the country. I work for New Buildings Institute. We're really focused on reducing carbon emissions in the build the building sector. That does include things like EV and just kind of everything that is tied to the building. I particularly am the school subject matter expert. So I work in schools, as Donald said, all over the nation. I'm just sort of getting up to speed in the actually the whole state of Maryland. So if there's anything that I touch on where you guys are like, I know this, feel free to stop me. Or if there's something you want to know more, I also say, please butt in. I prepared a few slides just because I wasn't super sure where to go exactly. But they I just really want to get across that getting to zero in schools is extremely possible. We're seeing it all across the nation. There is one in every climate zone in the United States. I believe the and the focus today is more on new construction, but we can also talk about retrofits if you're interested. But what I'll talk about today will be a little bit more new construction focused. And again, if there's anything where I say something that you don't understand, or if I say something where you're like, we have been here, please stop. Feel free to butt in. This is an open conversation. I'm gonna try and share my screen. This is probably fairly self evident to all of you that we want to get to zero in schools because they deliver cost avoidance from the utility bills back into the facilities. There are these comfortable, productive environments for students and staff. I was actually just talking to Joanna, who's the Sustainability Director at Baltimore City Schools about all of the different data sources that cite these comfortable and productive learning environments. And they're really tied to the individual attributes in these buildings. It's like daylighting, it's windows that open, it's all sorts of different things. But a net zero building or a carbon neutral building really ties all those attributes together to make those comfortable and productive spaces. And of course, if utilized, you can use these buildings as a hand on hands on learning environment, which is really cool. I mean, we're seeing people use them in French classes, talking about climate and emissions in French. It's amazing. So these schools really provide this kind of like well rounded, wraparound service to different communities. And of course, in a lot of places, they can actually provide a resilient community center. We saw that in Portland, Oregon this year when we had a historic heat wave where our schools were actually the places that were cooling centers, they provided food, they provided water. We've seen the same thing in wildfires. So they're a really great place to have as kind of your community central hub, and they can also provide leadership because of that. Also, if I keep going and you guys are like, you're running out of time, just cut me off, too. We like to, we've adopted this term getting to zero over time because in school districts, in jurisdictions, all across the nation, zero energy or carbon neutrality can seem like this really insurmountable goal because it just feels like, well, we need to make all of our nets zero, all of our buildings that's zero right now. That is not the case at all. We call it getting to zero over time because it's this long term strategic approach to energy management. So it's using every opportunity in your building lifecycle from new construction to, you know, a building retrofit, you're replacing the roof, you're doing anything. It could be board turnover. It can be just about any opportunity to continue to drive down your energy use and your emissions, both new construction and existing buildings. And to do this, you set measurable goals, and then you regularly report and understand what you're doing. And of course, it's focusing on the benefits of the learning environment and our occupants because we don't build schools to operate schools. We build them for students and teachers. And then again, it's leveraging that every opportunity. And I'll show you an example in here. I believe I put it in here. This is fairly dense, and just know that you guys can have these slides after. But one of the really key parts about how we get to zero over time is starting early and really incorporating it into everything you do. Every person you talk to, every document, setting your baseline and understanding where you are in terms of your energy use and your carbon use, and then just continuing to track that over time. And something I talked to, I talked to part of this group the other day, it's really important to have language about zero energy and energy efficiency in these guidance documents, which are these documents that guide construction. That's something we can absolutely help you with. We actually ran a cohort of zero energy schools in the state of California. We're about to do the same in the state of New York, so each each coast. And through that, we developed this template language for policies, resolutions, the guidance documents, a reporting template. And that's the kind of stuff that the district really needs to make sure that zero energy is really part of the culture and part of every design choice. I did want to show you this. So CMTA is an engineering firm that actually worked on the Baltimore schools. They've done a bunch of schools in Kentucky. They've done schools all over the place. I generally don't like to say like one engineering firm or one architecture firm is better than the other because everyone is working towards a better outcome. But CMTA knows what's going on. So what I want to show, I'm gonna try and open the chat. Yes, I agree. Energy language and everything, RFPs, all the documents. I love seeing that. So CMTA actually showed me this this morning, and what they're showing is that these green dots here are their zero energy buildings. And the energy use is here on the left. So we like to say that a zero energy building has an energy use intensity, which is total energy use over the course of the year. We want them to be about in the 20 range. So you'll see 20. This one's pushing up to 30, but that's okay, too, depending on the amount of solar you have. And these are kind of business as usual buildings. I love it. Yes, Discovery Elementary, one of these dots is Discovery. I just don't know which one. And what you'll see is that the cost per student is either about the same as these conventional buildings or a little bit less. And I know that that's an important conversation topic for you all. That's what I was told last week, and it generally the case in all school that school districts. But I just wanted to show you that real quick. Come on, slides, you can do it. And this is another slide from them, just showing that one, I mean, the loading order of how you approach a zero energy building is to make it as efficient as possible. So really tighten up that envelope so that you have a smaller HVAC system. That already saves you on money. But then your building is much more efficient so that in order to offset and get to zero and get that PV, you need much less PV because your energy use intensity is way lower. I mean, if you look at this California average, for example, the California average is about 40, I actually think it's like 43.6. They need so much more PV than a little zero energy building down there. So it's it's kind of a win win. This is kind of the same thing I showed earlier, but it's really important to hit home after we talked about that cost per UI that you're really leveraging and disclose or really leveraging and measuring and making sure that you're understanding exactly how much energy you need to reduce so that you can continually reduce that energy demand, have your solar be more cost effective. You know, I I mentioned this concept called the loading order where you'd start with your envelope because you make a really tight building. Then you need a smaller system, a smaller HVAC system, because you don't have to heat and cool as much. And then you have a really efficient building, so you can put those renewables on after. And one of the key things here, I'll say zero energy, but what I'm really aiming towards here is carbon neutral buildings. Because if we're really gonna reduce emissions, which is we need to do like yesterday, we really need to plan out, plan for the phase out of fossil fuels. So new construction is the way to go. We actually had a school in Portland, Oregon that just opened and is beautiful. It's a zero energy school, and which, by the way, I will say Portland, Oregon, although we are considered to be fairly liberal and fairly green, we are not a green city. We really struggle more than you would imagine to get energy efficiency projects off the ground. But we had success in a new middle school, and that middle school is a new construction, and they chose to go all electric because it actually it A was more efficient and more, you know, sustainable, less emissions. But also, the district saved almost $1 million by not putting in gas infrastructure. So new construction has the opportunity to not have gas and save money, which is a big deal. I kind of talked about this. I'm assuming everyone here kind of knows what an EUI is because that's what we generally use for zero energy buildings. But we call it the M P G for buildings. It's like your little Prius or whatever car you have. It's your annual energy use divided by your total building area over the course of a year. And I mentioned this earlier, that one of the ways that we absolutely have to get a zero energy building is by setting these project level goals. This is a lot of words. I'll pass this on to you. You can have it later, but these are ones that we suggest. So it's having an energy use intensity of 20 kilobtuus per square foot per year. Remember the 20. I will show you where that came from. And then being all electric, especially in new construction, having no gas combustion, and then offsetting your annual electricity use with solars where possible. You can also do net zero already if you're not able or you don't have the space to get the renewables, so you can kind of figure it out down the road. Retrofits is a little different. We do that more in a reduction of a by percent instead of the UI. But if it's a major modernization, like basically mostly a new construction, except for maybe you leave the walls, that we also do in an UI. So this is where that 20 came from. So we say 20 pretty much across the board for new construction because this came from the Ashray Zero Energy Design Guide for K-12 schools. They did a big study, a big feasibility study on what you can actually set your zero energy building to be for your energy use intensity. And this, I believe, is your climate zone 4A, and you can see that a primary school, which is, you know, elementary, middle, is 18. And this, I believe, is your climate zone 4A, and you can see that a primary school, which is, you know, elementary, middle, is 18, well, almost 19, sorry. And that your secondary school, a high school, is just slightly higher than that. So we see across the nation that schools can get anywhere in the 20 to 25 range. Eight, I think, is Alaska, and they are even in the 25 EUI range. Just remember, this is new construction. Retrofits, and especially major retrofits, major modernizations can still get in that range, but we like to say more in the 25 to 30 just because of loads that may have already existed. Like, we have one school here that has like a manufacturing, like a car manufacturing thing onsite, so slightly different process load. And then instead of just looking at, you know, just saying every building is this EUI, we also want to look at this from a portfolio. This is that getting zero over time so that you actually have an average portfolio site energy use intensity of, we could say 20 to 25, but that you're constantly looking at this in the long term so that you can continually drive down your energy. And that's really great for communicating with your stakeholders, your delegates, everyone to show that although, you know, this building may, may have not been a zero energy building, this one was still more efficient, and we're actually driving down our portfolio on average. This is a little roadmap that I put together that you can kind of see how all of these things play together, where new construction is down here, major modernizations are here, you might have a more efficient system with your retrofit, and you're just kind of working towards that. I like to say 2045, but if you want to go for 2040, I'm all for it. I will stop there. Does anyone have any questions? I just have a case study here that I can kind of quickly show, but I do want to stop for a second.
Riley, I'm gonna take moderator's prerogative here to ask the first question. Your first recommendation is to take a long-term approach. Obviously, you know, we can't do all of this in one year. What I, I do wonder though, is are we, have we reached the point where we could say, from a cost and performance perspective, and of course, all the other important factors, that every new school should be net zero energy?
Absolutely. New construction without a doubt, I say this like fairly aggressively. New construction without a doubt should be aiming towards net zero or net zero ready and be all electric. So that's really carbon neutral. I know carbon neutral can be a little scary. Net zero can be really scary. But all new construction should be absolutely aiming towards net zero at this point. And although you can't do it all in one year, what you can do in one year is put together those goals and those guidance documents, like the RFP language and your tech, technical specifications, all that stuff. That can be done like right now so that it sets you up for success down the road.
Thank you. That's what I hope to hear.
Yeah, we're at the point, and I just had a climate talk with some students last week, and just listening to them talk about their climate anxiety and how it feels like no one's doing anything, and they really just like want to be heard. I feel real aggressive about net zero being what we have to do now, and carbon neutral. It's not just net zero, it's carbon neutral. Any other questions, or would you like me to do a case study? I don't want to just talk at you guys the whole time.
I think, uh, what member, Boozer Schotter has a question.
Oh, great.
Yeah, thank you so much. So, you know, the, the dilemma that's interesting for us in the state of Maryland is we have to fight so hard just to get a school, any school built, and to get funding just to build new schools. And that is something that I've been very passionate about. Do you believe that state legislators will be more motivated and county councils and the others who fund school systems by net zero energy and the energy savings that they will, that they will move more quickly so that more built, new buildings can be built throughout their state? Do you have any evidence that this will help us get new schools?
That energy savings specifically will lead directly to new schools?
Are you seeing any evidence in any other state legislators that they are investing more in new schools, public schools, because the schools are, because the systems are saying they will be net zero energy?
Absolutely. Arlington, I'm not Arlington, Virginia, actually, gosh, I think it was three or four years ago now, adopted that for all new construction, they have to follow that ASHRAE Zero Energy Design Guide because of the energy savings, the implications for student health. It's like a full gamut of things. So Virginia did that three or four years ago. California has a really, I mean, I know California sometimes like a dirty, dirty word to other states. But California also has this goal of 2045, and they have invested a ton of money in not just school new construction, but school retrofit. They had a whole program to support school zero energy retrofits. We're seeing it pop up kind of all over the place. New York just launched a big initiative. I know Massachusetts has a pretty big initiative. So it's, it's pretty much everywhere, and it's not just the energy savings that are getting people to latch on. It's the health, it's the wellness. These schools just offer so much, and I know that one of the big topics here, right, is do they cost more? And that is never an easy answer. And the answer is, at this point, they actually don't cost more. They cost just as much, but you get so much more out of them in the long term.
Just to parse that a little bit, I, I think there were maybe, maybe two parts to that question, and I think you answered. It seemed like you were answering one of them, which is when decision-makers, legislators and others build schools, are they inclining more towards net zero? Now, maybe I misunderstood what you were saying, but I think Pamela's question in particular was, are they more enthusiastic about funding schools and building new schools because of the great new opportunities that these schools offer?
This question is tricky, and at a state level, and actually, what I should have locked on to first was, I heard you say that Maryland has a really hard time funding every individual school, and I will tell you, Maryland is not alone. I think there's seven or eight states that do not get per-student funding for capital constructions, so every dollar they have to fight for. I live in one, Oregon, really struggles. So sometimes the state isn't even involved in this process, and that's arguably much harder. However, I will, oh, I will get to that. That's a great question, Jamie. When you have state-level buy-in, that can be on opportunity, and of course, sounds like it can be less of an opportunity. But state-level buy-in in certain states like California, New York, I'm just gonna throw them out because they're leaders, that has helped really dive into these net zero buildings. I mean, California, for example, is all net zero all the time for these schools. I think that answers that one question that like people are really, it's, it's net zero or the highway, basically, at this point. And because of that, they're really, really seeking out more support and more funding to push schools down this path. That is not the case in every state, but we are starting to see that, which is really great, that there's just a lot of like, like I said, it's net zero or the highway. And I think there was another part of that question, but I may have lost it in that.
Okay, well, we do have quite a question queue, so maybe we can move on to Michael Harris.
Yes, I have a two-part question. One, the schools that you have worked with that have attained that zero, have any of them been able to attain that zero without onsite generation? And the second point is, do you have any idea of comparable cost to retrofit a school to get it to net zero versus, you know, getting a new school to net zero? I mean, the fact is that, you know, that not just Prince George's County or Maryland or probably the country. There's, you know, there are a large number of existing schools that are not going to disappear. And yes, you can get some new schools, but for the most part, I mean, even 20 years from now, I don't know the proportion to existing schools and new schools are going to change significantly. So my interest would be just, how successful have you been with retrofitting schools to get to net zero? And like I asked at the beginning, have you been able to do that without onsite generation?
The first one is easier to answer, the onsite generation. Yes, schools are utilizing offsite generation, or in some places, they're doing, they're looking at it on a portfolio scale. So like, maybe three different schools have all gone net zero, but they have enough generation at one site to offset another. But there's just different ways to kind of slice the net zero pie, and some of them do buy offsets. I generally don't love the offset approach, but it is possible.
Yeah, I don't either, yeah.
Yeah, but people are doing it, or we have one school that actually built offsite solar. It's like 80 megawatts, 80 megawatts of offsite solar that's generating it for a bunch of their schools in their district. So there's always a different option. And then the second part, retrofit. So California, the, the start to the retrofit thing was that California created something called the Proposition 39 Zero Net Energy Retrofit Pilot Program, which is a mouthful. And they were seeking out to prove if retrofits were cost-effective. They had the utilities putting money into it. Unfortunately, what sort of came out of that was that retrofits are not super cost-effective, but that was about five years ago. And since then, because they were able to get the market interested, more and more retrofits are coming online. I just talked to a gentleman in Colorado who is retrofitting his entire building stock. It's a small building stock guarantee that there, he's trying to retrofit all of them to zero over time. He's using this whole concept of getting to zero, and he's doing it in some really unique ways, like using energy service performance contracting with an ESCO, an energy services company, and just kind of continuing to get, you know, 10% savings here, 40% savings here, and that makes it a lot more cost-effective. Retrofits right now, I mean, it is, like you said, I think there's some stat that's like 1% of the building stock turns over every year, so 99% of it is just existing. So making it cost-effective, you can do that getting to zero over time approach. That's how you kind of start to balance it. A large-scale retrofit or a large-scale major modernization to net zero is coming at, some of them are coming at comparable to new construction only because they put net zero and zero energy, or I'm sorry, and energy efficiency in those guiding documents and those goals and talked about it for years in advance.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So at this point, we have, I see three hands up, so we'll try and get through those, and then we're going to go on to Dawn. So next up is Councilmember Taveras.
Yes, hi. Thank you. I, I love this conversation. We had actually two, we had, we gave out two awards through CIPC at CAG I believe, last week, and one of which was to a, I think it was Arlington, either London or, no, Arlington, either Arlington or Alexandria last week. I gotta double check. But they provided a, they provided, they had just rebuilt a community center that was double the size but half of the energy consumption from the original building that was built there. So that's how drastic of a energy savings lowering the carbon footprint. So we're talking about leaps and you know, miles ahead in terms of the cost savings and the benefits of, of implementing these types of, of energy-efficient buildings. So I, and, and I think, I mean, it was just bigger, better, and period. And they were recognized for, for, for their, you know, innovation regionally. And I just think that we can definitely follow in those footsteps, and I don't see why through the second P3 cycle, not include green technologies in our buildings. That's just my take on it. I think that we can include it and start down that trajectory moving forward as well.
I can't react, but I'm clapping over here.
And I'm sorry, and I'm sorry that I'm, I'm a little late. I had to, I just came from the doctors, but, but yes, so that's kind of where I am. I just same thing with the electric buses. I think it's just also a matter of time for us to get bigger, better and more sleeker. But I, I mean, Sean could speak to that, but I think that you guys know where my heart is on this particular issue.
Well, thank you for the encouraging words, Councilmember. I guess we should move on to Donald Bell.
It's the same question that I put in the chat. Are you seeing any examples where schools are leveraging maybe retrofits that already have to occur due to the pandemic to also reduce carbon footprint?
Yes. Oh, my gosh, I'm so excited you asked this question. So these projects aren't done yet because this is a fairly new concept or a fairly new, you know, pipeline of money. I'll send you guys my slides because at the end of the slides are a bunch of slides about the federal funding and the different pipelines for that. But a lot of school districts, especially the ones that we've worked with that have put up those goals and the guiding standards and other things like that, that really set forth like the technical specifications for HVAC retrofits. So a lot of school districts are utilizing these federal funds that are coming in for pandemic relief for energy efficiency because they're already having to go in and replace an HVAC system. And you can, there's some kind of specific lists of like what you can use. And in one school district, I just talked to yesterday, actually, said that they were able to use their pandemic funds to tighten the envelope on one of their buildings because they were having, you know, some issues with draftiness and whatnot. They were able to tighten their envelope, get a smaller HVAC system and an upgraded HVAC system so that their system was more efficient just because it was a lot smaller. It was like half the size or maybe two-thirds of the size. And they were able to have it be more efficient in terms of air, air quality because they couldn't finally put these, we, you know, they call it a MRF-13 filter. That's the more, that's the stronger filter. So the new system was smaller, more energy efficient. They were able to use the COVID dollars for their envelope too at the same time. So a lot of people are kind of sneakily doing that in the, I mean, it's not sneaky. It's actually great. It's wonderful. But that is happening. I sort of can't wait for the next year or two to have more of those projects surface, but the way that they're doing that is by having those goals, talking about energy and carbon in every construction conversation, and having the technical specifications that guide it to the high levels of construction.
And, and Mr. Matt Lock.
Yeah, so one of the things I just wanted to comment to is that, you know, we, we are, there are a lot of, we're starting to use some green technologies in our, in, in our current P3 portfolio. We're making them solar-ready. We're adding charging stations. We're trying to do things to make them more green. Trying to get, we, we at one point looked at, thinking about taking them to be net zero, but we couldn't, we couldn't get to, to the number on that for this, this particular tranche, and we may try again on the second tranche to get to net zero as we're designing a different type of school. But ultimately, I guess the question, what we're seeing, I just wanted to point out, is that we're seeing a, a lot of people where they're putting forward legislation now to try and to encourage more green and net zero-type technology be included in buildings. But it hasn't, and I just, this is just a report, sort of, it hasn't really actually resulted in more money. There is, there is money, a little bit more money, state money in construction right now, but it's not necessarily tied directly to that. It's more tied to Kerwin and both learn, but there, there are, there are steps afoot to make the buildings more green and also to make them closer to net zero or not, if not, you know, net zero at, at some point. And so the legislation's changing, which will drive design no matter what happens. But as, as a, as a, as a, as a funding thing, money's pretty much been very, fairly limited, at least at the state level for construction. And, and, and so that's what we're seeing right now, anyway.
And I guess at this point, we should move on to Ms. Dawn Holton, who will be introducing the next segment of our conversation.
All right, um, so I'm gonna share my screen in just a second here. As stated in the previous meeting, we actually have been implementing a lot of green technology, just as Sean was saying, in a number of our projects. A lot of them have, you know, we have shovels in the ground right now. And so basically, we just, I just put this together today. This is kind of highlight some of those. I know we were short on time, so it's, it's literally just a few slides. So at the picture, there is a New England Ridge Area Middle School that will be under construction very shortly. So here's the first slide. These are important guidelines to consider, and the big one for us this year has been the 2018 International Code Council Code Upgrade. It has become the bane of Sean's existence on a lot, a number of projects, mine too. But But Prince George's County adopted these codes January first this year. So that didn't necessarily affect some of the older projects that were already under review or in queue, but it definitely affects everything that we still have councils on right now. So all of those things we have to take into account along with the stormwater requirements for the county, which is head and shoulders above everything that the state requires. The state requires one thing, Prince George's County is way up here. So what that means is, is that we have to spend more dollars, millions of dollars on each one of these projects dealing with the soil, whether it's uh, moving uh, particular types of soil that they want off the site and replacing it with more soil. Or that also means beefing up the structure of the building that provide a green roof because we don't have enough site leftover after the construction to provide the stormwater facilities. That's required of finding new creative ways to manage stormwater on site. Um, and then even with doing some of the management of stormwater on site, impervious surfaces and things like that, we really have to consider um, what is maintainable by our maintenance department in terms of those materials. Um, that's not something you want to damage and then you end up with a a poor stormwater situation. So uh, the other thing that we also have to consider for us, I mean, just like Sean was saying, are these IAC and DGS requirements. And IAC will fund our projects at the seventy percent um, based on the enrollment of that facility. However, we do have to meet their requirements and their requirements state that if it's a new facility, we have to make, we have to have at least lead silver or some sort of equivalent or have a waiver for while we can't do anything. So in doing that, in the previous versions, and I was kind of having an offline conversation with Sean about this earlier, in previous versions of LEED, it was a lot easier to maintain that certificate, obtain that certification for a school building. This new version four, which is, you know, been in place for a little while now, is a lot more difficult. So trying to do that in net zero um, at the same time, sometimes it could be an expensive project, not because of the net zero part. I I agree with Riley. I I think we can do net zero, but trying to maintain the state certification so we can receive their funding to pay for that building. This is what drives a lot of the costs up on some of these projects. So I'm going to go to the next slide just real quick. Um, so the universal goals that we have met on every single project, all of the new projects that we have right now, the ACF schools, the William Word Schmidt, Sutland, all of the, everything that we have our hands in and design right now or in construction right now has met a minimum of silver in design process. We are also doing the enhanced commissioning as required by LEED. Before, in the previous version, it was an option, now is a prerequisite. So so we're doing the enhanced commissioning for the building envelope. And just like Riley was saying earlier, and I told Sean too, that envelope is the big key to all of it because if you shrink your BTU requirement, you shrink how much money you have to spend running that building later. So that that is a huge, huge piece of it. So and we're also working on um, trying to get that they like harvesting in all of our new facilities as well. We're still working with our design teams on a number of buildings for that. And every one of our buildings, whether it's the electrical system um, or being able to have space on the roof for PV panels, every single one of these buildings is ready to receive solar panels at the end of construction. So just like I said, the blueprint schools, these are the um, the the um, alternative construction financing schools, Hidesfield Middle, Kenmore, all the way down to the Southern K eight, every single one of them will be solar ready. And we're doing enhanced commissioning on those buildings. That's, I think that's a picture of what the Southern K eight is going, going to look like. Um, William Work, William Work did not, uh, we could not do a geothermal system for William Work. And the main reason was because when they did, they ran the calculations, they did not have enough wells. Uh, we could not dig enough wells to supply the entire facility, unfortunately. However, they were still able to do other things with the envelope and otherwise to get that lead silver certification. Glen Ridge Middle School was feasible for the geothermal system, so it will have a geothermal system. Uh, I think you got Riley mentioned CMTA, who had done that study. They're the designer for Glen Ridge. They did the MEP. I saw that. They did the MEP for Glen Ridge and they did a great job working with them. Uh, Cherokee Lane, this was the pilot program. And obviously, the initiative for the pilot program was to cut down on the initial upfront cost of the building by thirty percent. That was the in, um, the pilot program initiative. Um, so when we did this project, it was done with off-site construction technology. This is um, this is Sean's baby here. But we were able to do this building off-site, well, sixty five percent of it was off-site. It is currently under construction now, um, right next to Buck Lodge Middle School. And it is also lead silver and the electrical system can support uh, transfer of power to PV panels in the future. Uh, New Sutland High School. So what you see on the right-hand side of this slide is a rendering of Sutland. And you see all those PV panels on the roof along with the green roof and everything that we have to do for stormwater. This building is being designed to and budgeted for PV panels. So that's both to help with the LEED certification and the energy usage because it's a massive facility. Uh, William Schmidt, we are doing a number of things with Schmidt and we should, this is a affectionately known as Camp Schmidt. And I'm a PGCPS product. I actually went to Camp Schmidt as a kid, so um, it should be. Um, we should be able to do as much as we can with this facility because of what it means and what it is to the system in this community. Um, so we are doing a number of initiatives here from PV panels to geothermal systems, all kinds of things here to meet the LEED gold standard. So that's, that's basically overview of what we are doing right now. Some of the more recent projects that we have worked on. Some of the more recent projects that we have worked on uh, that also have LEED certification. Uh, Tulip Grove is a lead silver school. Uh, Glenard and Woods is silver and Fairmont Heights is lead gold. Uh, they just got their plaque last year, I think it was. So um, and obviously, if you guys know, if you, whenever you apply for that certification, what has to happen is you have to have advanced commissioning for a couple of years post uh, construction and present your data back to Green Building Council and then they certify the school. So so yes, Fairmont Heights was finished in uh, twenty seventeen. And then they just finally got their plaque, I think at the beginning part of last year. So those are the things that uh, we have our hands in today. Um, if that helps anybody to uh, understand, you know, what we have been working on. And I mean, and just like we talked about before, as far as the standards, we work really, really hard with building services um, to create a a book of standards. Our guideline specifications that have energy efficiency and maintainability built into them. So we're not just over here in capital programs on one side of the hallway, building things and saying, okay, Sam Stefanelle, go maintain it. We're working together with them and we're making sure that we're collaboratively putting together a great product at the end. So that was all I came up with today to kind of help provide some insight on what Sean and I and everybody in our department's been working on.
Oh, thank you, Don, that you all are doing amazing work and I was, um, yeah, I, uh, it was, yeah, that's all I can say. But I think Director Matlock had the first question and then I know I had one and everyone else should raise their hands if they have questions.
Well, that's much of your questions, the comment, number one, thank you, Don, that was really excellent. Um, one of the, I saw one, there was a question in there or a comment in there from Slaman about uh, the windowless Roosevelt, which I know you attended uh, as a student. And um, what, there's a tension and this is something I just wanted to bring forward. There is a real tension uh, between building inexpensively and trying to do what we're trying to do, which is build quality. And there, you know, we can't build the cheapest schools and still provide net zero, um, the proper daylighting you need, the proper materials and things you need, not only just the operation of building from a, an energy standpoint, but from a good environmental standpoint and a livable uh, productive environment that the kids can go into, um, get good air, good sound quality, good daylighting, good task lighting, um, have the air system work in a way that makes sense, have an envelope system that supports the kind of net zero programs that you're, that we're trying to move towards these green programs. Um, these are, this requires some degree of commitment. You'll pay a little bit upfront, but over the long haul, you'll have a better system. And that's what we're trying to shoot for, which is to build buildings that are maintainable and are are, make sense. Now, a lot of times we, as you, as Don was saying, we can't go with some of the systems that we'd like to use in order to reduce the cost of operation. In those situations, we then have to look for more efficient systems that we know that are also robust. But because of the building envelope, we can make them smaller and more cost effective. And then when you add solar and you add some of the other things, that's when you start moving your energy consumption down, your net zero aspects of it. And we're really actually trying to get that sort of design moving forward. And but again, there's a tension, you know, you know, between costs versus what we're trying to do on a quality basis. And and that's something that that's a debate that our community has not yet resolved clearly. And um, it's something that that people are going to have to weigh in over time.
Thank you. Um, I I guess I'll go next with my question, two questions. Uh, the first was, as far as the LEED silver requirements, have y'all looked into, I think it's Green Globe? Or I think IGCC, one of, I always get IGCC and ICC mixed up. But I think those are alternatives now. And I was wondering if you've all looked into that. And the second question I had is whether or not um, the new P three ACF model can provide different ways to like amortize the upfront cost or anything like that to make this whole net zero process easier.
Uh, I can say for the blueprint schools, we're, we may, I think, in talking to Jason, we're kind of still working on that part. Um, in terms of the other avenues for green building certification, yes, we have had our designers look into Green Globes. We have had them look into the um, the ICC certification as well. Um, and I think for some of our projects, it was actually a little bit trickier than LEED even was, depending on what was going in those buildings. So um, you know, for a school building, it it's not just, you know, classrooms, a gym, a library and, you know, a main office. It it depends on the nature of the programs that are being put inside. So, you know, you may have um, a special needs program or or some sort of specialty, something, a CTE even, you know, it's like for northern high schools, that's going to be another monster um, that we have to consider when you look at, you know, doing a calculation to meet any of those certifications. So and and northern, we're still, you know, modeling a lot of different things with that one because it is another enormous uh, project. But it also has an enormous section of it that is a very specialized area. So it's going to have a different demand uh, when it comes to the BTUs that's required to operate it and different things like that. Or even the equipment that's inside that gives off fumes or something and we have to have special exhaust. I mean, so I mean, th- those are things that we that we have to look at as well. And and that's looking at Mary's uh, comment about Roosevelt. Yes, there was a, there were a number of architects somewhere between like the late sixties and early seventies who believed that if you take away the windows, the students will focus better. I'm a ERHS alum myself and I remember going to that school with no windows. And I I can tell you the worst part about it was blackouts. So, yeah, so black, blackouts was terrible. But yeah, I mean, MLK, Indian Queen Roosevelt, I believe, were our only buildings that were designed that way.
Uh, Don, would you mention uh, like some of the things where we're trying to save space? In order to save these BTUs, like in our um, in our media centers and things like that, we're trying to reduce the size of uh, the spaces. Talk a little about that.
Yeah, I mean, basically, well, I I can give you a kind of a good example. So Glenard and Woods Elementary School was a retrofit project. So that project turned into um, turned the old um, multipurpose room into the media center. So in that old building, the height of the multipurpose room was a little bit shorter. So it actually was a pretty good fit. But for these newer schools, um, we have a lot of requirements and sometimes this minute mandated by the planning guy from the state to have, you know, certain ceiling heights and things like that. And we all know with more uh, cubic feet, it's more cubic feet of of air that has to be conditioned. Um, and and even with the envelope, like Riley was saying, you know, you tighten up that envelope, you lower the infiltration rate that goes into that HVAC calculation and that's less air that you have to condition as well. So if you, if you shrink that number, then yeah, your system does not have to be as large. It can absolutely be more efficient. And then I thank, thank you, Sean, for your support on these HVAC projects because if we do these windows, I mean, that's just a part of the envelope, but it's a huge chunk of energy, huge chunk of energy.
And so I think Michael's up next.
Yes, uh, thank you for that. And I've looked at your, the list of schools that y'all have actually implemented your thermal and it's quite an impressive list that y'all have done that. But my comment was that, you know, and I'm with Boise State University and we come already under the state guidelines more than the county, but you know, we've done quite a few LEED silver gold. We actually have a platinum science building. But I remember maybe fifteen, twenty years ago, when this this LEED certification started, the state used to be pushing back because of the so-called incremental cost. I don't know what you found, but I, we, over the years, the incremental, I forget, we know that there's less operating cost. Incremental capital cost is not that much more significant than what, you know, if if you didn't implement a lot of these measures uh, to get the energy savings. What what have you found uh, with that? The the incremental costs used to get one time eight, ten percent. And I think in the end, now we look at maybe, maybe even if it's two, three percent. I'm just curious to know what you have found.
Well, I can tell you what I've I've seen. Um, and I I came from the design side over to the owner side. So I I can kind of give you both both ends of it a little bit. So yes, you're right, the older versions of LEED, it was a lot simpler, a lot easier to obtain that for a school. Now, what we're finding on the, I'm on the owner's side now. And what I'm saying is, is that this new version four, a lot of things that were optional things that you could go after and the old versions are now prerequisites. You must do them or you don't get the points or any of the points that follow up underneath them. So now, in order to do those things, some of these other items that are under some of these points, we're finding ourselves spending more capital dollars to reach and get these points. I'll give you an example. I know in an old, I can't remember exactly which project it was, but I think we had gone to buying, you know, lay-in ceiling tiles from a local distributor within that five hundred mile range in order to get um, some of the additional points on that project because we were, you know, right at a cusp. And the the tiles actually probably cost, you know, three to four times as much as it would from a national distributor someplace sells, but we had to do that in order to get these points. But, you know, so yes, we get the points, we make the state happy, we get the dollars from them so we can continue with construction, but then they still beat us over the head and that they, well, why does this project cost so much? Well, you told us to get this cert. So, so I mean, it is now because of the new requirements for LEED, it's a real tango.
And one thing, and this is Sam Stefano, I'm sorry I'm late. Um, one thing that we're finding, especially with the geothermal systems, is I'm a geothermal system fan. Schools lend themselves because of the sizable property to installing geothermal systems, but they typically use heat pump, heat source, uh, water source heat pumps, which have a life expectancy of about fifteen years. Our, the equipment we're replacing has a life expectancy of forty years. We stretched it out to sixty. We're finding now that we're having our geothermal systems that were put in fifteen years ago, we're having to start to replace the heat pumps. And we were struggling to find funding for that because of the other schools that are fifty, sixty years old that we're trying to upgrade. So the one thing that uh, the public sector gets that the private sector doesn't is the savings over the life of the building. over the life of the building does not go back in my pocket. That that is just put back in the general fund and then it becomes a capital project fifteen years later, which is putting extra strain on our, on our capital resources. Um, you know, a lot of these lead, it um, mechanical equipment save us a lot of money, save us energy and I'm all for it. But at the end of the year, we have to have a plan for quicker replacement. A lot of our state funding is geared to a fifteen-year life expectancy. If something fails prior to fifteen years, which it does, we're left holding the bag. We, we have to use operating capital to replace that equipment because we were tied to this timeline on a lot of our capital projects. It's just to think about.
Well, that is why I've always used, you know, to use the argument, even with solar and, you know, energy reduction methods, you can't just sell it just on, on cost. It has to be the carbons, you know, to get into carbon neutrality. If you just use, you know, if you, I know, I know legislators and people that fund this, you know, that's why they look at cost. But part of selling the package has to be with carbon neutrality, you know? If you just, you know, talk about the cost, uh, you know, it it becomes more of an uphill climb.
On this.
I know.
We, there's a cost savings along with uh the environmental impact that the, the issue is the cost saving i- isn't put away for later use. Life expectancy of building, don't fund a building individually like private sector does. So at the end of the day, they're looking at what's the thirty-year cost of owning this building. We, we look at the year-to-year cost of owning a building and then add to our capital program, which is another funding stream. So we have to just keep in mind in our, with our capital program that we need to have maybe a line item that says we have to be prepared to replace these geothermal systems, or at least some of their components at a fifteen or twenty-year mark as opposed to a thirty or forty-year mark. That's all.
Yeah, and to that, and to that point, it'd be helpful if we were able to also retain some of the money we save um and have that put into the maintenance budget as well. Um, it helps Sam out is with some of these projects and replacements. I mean, what happens is we've done all this work to save the money, but we, but it, but it's a, it's a capital save, but it's not going back into a capital uh pool so that we can continue to save.
Yeah, yeah, and this is why, you know, um, well, Sam, you know, I've, I've worked with Darth and all the rest of the guys in the shop and just trying to figure out um, even for geothermal water source heat pumps, um, can we find a more sustainable product of a manufacturer that is going to give us what we need, that the heat exchanger is not going to fail in ten to fifteen years? Is there a water treatment technique that we can use in the building that will make sure that the groundwater that comes up through the system is not scaling up everything? And then you have these flexible connectors and things that you literally have to throw away after about seven or ten years. So um, some of these manufacturers are getting a lot better at that and um, and we're trying to stay in touch with them and and make sure that we know what's coming up next because we know that heat pumps aren't going away. But we need to make sure that we continue to have sustainable products in our specifications so our designers know what to do.
Um, I I don't see any other hands up, but oh, there's Donald. He, I think he has a question. You're muted, sir.
Sorry. Is this a problem that's particularly unique to uh water source heat pumps? Or is it equally true of ground source and air source heat pumps? The, the problem of, of them just wearing out too quickly or having parts fail too quickly?
Well, it's heat pumps in general have a fifteen-year life expectancy. But we use heat pumps generally with geothermal systems, water source heat pumps as opposed to air, air heat pumps. We don't use, we may use them sporadically, maybe for an office or a split system of some sort, but uh, for the most part, it's geothermal is the systems that we use within schools. They're available, there are applications, yeah.
Okay, I I I am sorry because uh actually I think that was some confusion of terminology. Uh, there's a different type of system that is sometimes referred to as water source, where the uh the sink in the source is actually a pool of water. Uh, but yeah, I understand what you're talking about. These are standard.
What a water source heat pump is, is it's just like the heat pump you have in your home? Except the heat pump in home draws the heat out of the air.
Right.
Water source draw, use the water. So you have fifty years, whatever the temperature of the water is coming out of the ground gives a stable source to draw the heat from. And it makes sense to use that except for the life expectancy of the equipment. Because that compressor all year round, you're running it, it's not just running for air conditioning, it runs for air conditioning and heat. So you're running, if you, you're running that twelve months a year or nine, ten months a year, depending on how uh the climate is. But that's the issue. So we end up at the end of fifteen years. We have a couple of schools where it started to fail uh that are at their fifteen-year meet mark. So um, that's, that's an issue we're continuing with right now. But I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think that the, the geothermal systems are something we should continue to use. I would like to continue to use them. However, we have to consider that. That's all.
Uh, Don?
Hey, um, so I I guess one of the things that I will say to Sam's point is um, the state has a requirement when we do these new projects to do a life cycle cost analysis. And we have to provide at least four systems in that analysis. Now, they don't want to see this analysis until about uh, the S, not the SD stage, but the DD stage, maybe the CD stage. That's when they usually would like to see it to approve you to move to the next stage of the project. I have started making designers provided at the SD. I think getting to the DD stage is far too late to make a decision on which system that you're going to use. You guys already have a a floor plan that you could put together, a block load for and determine how many BTUs we're going to be using, how many wells you need to do if you're going geothermal. And we're making informed decisions upfront on these projects, on exactly what type of system needs to go in there. And we're not just, oh, well, this sounds fun, let's do that. No, show me the numbers. Show me how many BTUs we're going to be spending. Show me how this is going to work. So we are doing that with every single project earlier than what we have in the past.
It looks like at this point, we're almost out of time. So I guess uh we should probably wrap things up. Um, uh, board member Boozer, Tyler, do you want to take us out?
Yeah, sure. Oh, my gosh, this has been so informative. Thank you so much, Riley, for joining us. I hope you can um join us again when we talk about retrofits and uh definitely heard your uh offer of ongoing uh education from your organization and how we can use your resources. And Donald, thank you for uh monitoring us and and Don for all your expertise and for bringing everything together for us and presenting and um, just giving us as, as you have done from day one, just giving us the direct talk that we, you know, what the facts that we need to, to hear. And Mr. Mr. Matlock for uh giving us the perspective of um, you know, where, where we can head and where some of those challenges are. We got into that a little bit um, uh, with our smaller group the other day around that we really, we do need to document back to the state and those who we report to for our funding, what we're discovering here and how we can move this forward. And um, you know, to Mr. Stefanelle, the equation that you put out there is something that as a board member, I've been thinking about a lot about how we, how we improve those life cycle budgeting and and planning and 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 really bring, save this really comes down to what we say back to the ultimate funder, uh, you know, those who contribute to the taxes of our state and county and and fund our schools. And and that is really, I think, I think what everyone really wants to hear, you know, the, the passion for for the climate, but also the, the savings so that we can uh put funds, you know, to other needs of our students um that that aren't wasted on high utility bills. So really heard so much from everyone today that I know we're going to be moving this forward and into the plans. Um, I see Donald, you have your, your hand back up. So if you, we still have a couple more minutes. If you would like to do another uh final closing for us. But thanks again to all of our expert guests uh this afternoon. Really appreciate it.
Thanks, Pamela. Uh, actually, I, if we have time, I I would just like to ask a question that uh uh, everybody in this call mail already know the answer to this, uh, but I'm clueless. Uh, this problem of savings uh uh from uh operate, building operations, not going back to the building budget or the maintenance budget or wherever it needs to be, uh, what is the uh procedurally, how do you, how do you correct that? Who, who makes that determination? And how do we, how do we change it? For anybody.
Well, from a board member perspective, there's policy. Um, you know, we could set policy around that and um then Dr. Goldson operationalizes that with the leadership team here uh would, would help us formulate, formulate that policy, but you know, others can weigh in, say if I'm wrong, that the board doesn't have that much power around this, but that I believe this could be done through a, through a policy.
It, it's very difficult because our budgets are cyclical and we're depending on the economy to to ask the board or even Dr. Coulson to lock away funding in especially during tough economic times in this county because as um, our the, our community, as times get tougher, depend more on the school system. So we have a tendency to uh, even if we lock away money, we have a tendency to forego that once the, once the economy starts to turn a downslide or there isn't enough uh funding to operate the school system. Um, I don't know how you do that in the public sector. The easiest way would be to have a, in my opinion, a capital line item that we fund at a certain dollar amount as opposed to trying to take the funding uh and yearly from the budget and move it, move it to a uh, some type of um rainy day fund for later use. That's very difficult to do with government budgets.
Thank you for clarifying that it's not just policy. Appreciate that.
I was going to say that uh we were successful in a small incremental way to have a separate line item for our rebate incentives that come in through Empower Maryland with the hope that those incentives could be used to kind of help uh be a, a pot for, for like-kind projects. Uh, we still have a long way to go with those, but you know, say, for instance, if you have a lighting retrofit project, project and those funds come back to that line item, or if you have a new chiller that is purchased or HVAC system or gas boiler. We are fortunate in the state of Maryland, as you, many of you already know, to be able to have those rebate incentives. Virginia doesn't have those, if I'm not mistaken, and some other states don't have them. And some school districts, some K twelve districts do utilize those budgets. Some of them participate in demand response. Uh, so in those high indices days in July and August, those funds can come back to that line item. And you can, you know, have those again, like projects too. Not the whole, the whole gamut of projects, but at least some can have some type of uh funding, if you will, additional funding outside of the budget.
All right. Thank you so much, Jamie. So I see we do have to log off. Um, so uh, any other quest, the other questions, we, I think we, some can move into our next meeting on November third. So I think we will continue to provide those to, to Don and Donald uh as we move forward and others who join us it for the next uh planning, which I believe will be uh Jamie and Michael will be assisting in the, the next session. So thank you all so much. I hope you have a great afternoon. I look forward to coming back together again on November third. Take care.
Thank you.